Yeah.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'll rise for a Pledge of Allegiance. A Pledge of Allegiance? Welcome, everyone. It's good to see people in the Village Hall again. It's, uh, it's nice. Now, I hope, I'm trusting this is recording. Um, says it is. We just didn't get that message saying, yeah, recording, right? So, um, but anyways, tonight we, um, we'll start with, uh, the homeowners associations. I don't know if, uh, Noam Alon from Bennington is here or online.
No, but I can speak from my window next door.
Do you have something you wanna say?
No.
Okay. All right. Apparently.
Not here.
Oh, not here, okay. All right. Um, how about Jack Dens from Lakes of Long Grove? All right. Uh, nope, that doesn't look like, that's Jean Sylvester. That's not, uh, Jack. So that, so, uh, there's no HOAs here. I'm hoping they got notices.
Yes, they did. Yeah. They're not happening on email.
There must be no issues? All right.
No time, we didn't, we didn't think.
Apparently not, all right. So then we're ready for public comment? I know Chris Meyer has public comment, so do you wanna lead us off?
Well, uh, we did have a step in the right direction. Uh, Mr. McCarthy came out with Abbott's land and, uh, two weeks ago, and not a. In a distant form, he hasn't heard anything, but he does have a little bit of a report. My question is, it's getting close to winter and the ground's gonna start freezing. There's no way they can, um, repair a fence, uh, which is falling apart, as Dana knows. And again, us, the landscapers, have the authority to address the burn issue, which is, let's put it this way, it's probably burning hills, only hills.
Oh, only hill, okay, got it. Got it, burning hills, hill, got it.
It's not a burn. It's, what would you say, Dana, five, six feet tall?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's possible to press anybody to mow. And to like down the street, there's hardly any burn at all, because it seems to go this way. So, does this landscaper have any authority to deal with the burn, which, as you know, was constructed not according to code, not according to permits and everything else? So, I'll be heard, Dana.
Yeah, so, um, afterwards, he looked at everything. Um, he's been the landscaper for Abbott, the farm, for, he said, I think, like twenty years. I'm totally familiar with it. Um, you know, he did kinda seem to think, you know, oh, there's not a whole lot we can do, but he'd say, well, you know, the grass is in violation, you know, all this stuff is in violation, so we need to figure out something, you know, we can either cooperate on it, or we can, you know, um, just continue to proceed with that. So, I asked him to go back, talk to, um, Abbott, his, uh, his, you know, the people he's contracted with, and to come up with some ideas of what they can do. I haven't heard back, so I'll call them first thing in the morning and find out if they have something. If not, then we have to, um, it'll have to come back to the board, you know, if they could.
Well, can we find them?
Yes, if it's, if he's not gonna do anything else, we can send the inspector out and have them on there. Hopefully because of the size of it, that he'd have some idea of them, what to do, um, you know, bringing in the fines, but if that's not the case, then we'll, um, we'll send our inspectors out to, to look at everything.
I mean, we'll do that before the next board meeting?
Tomorrow morning, yes.
What can we do to hurry up the pace on that?
Maybe if I sue Abbott for $2,000, this is ten million.
What's the fine? What can the fine be?
I believe it's up to $750 a day.
All right.
If they don't correct it, if they're.
Put the note out there. You'd be fined $750 today.
Time zero start.
So, they would, if we got them to go out tomorrow, I believe they'd give a notice, they'd ask, I believe, it'd be two or three weeks to fix, um, what's the violation, and then after that, then it starts racking up if they don't cover it.
We'll get a letter up?
Yeah, we, we need that, it's, uh, I mean, this has been so dragging.
I mean, I like seeing Chris in the, I like seeing Chris in the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't know that she needs to come here every.
I'll talk to both, uh, landscaper and.
Die before they get done.
Or whoever he reports to, and then I'll also talk to Keith, who's on the line, um, about it, and see if we can have them go out, uh, same day. I'm sorry.
I'll be glad to sign the letter, so.
Did you speak to anyone who works around it, decides you're interested in it?
No, no, not yet. And they've been, they've been the same company that's been with them a long time, so he works with his familiar, but he is a, a contracted vendor for it.
Yeah, so he has no authority to, I mean, you know, he can't go out and start chopping, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure within, yeah, within the, uh, contracts what they have, but I can let everyone know, I can keep the board updated.
I mean, Mr. Weisner, when he farmed it, used to cut it about halfway down, because that, otherwise he'd be like this, in his tractor. And, of course, he retired and nothing's being done, and nobody has been out to take care of it, and it's just, as Dana knows, it's a mess. My garden, I can't keep up with the weeds. They're coming in, and the wattle is now coming into my yard, and I just had to hire , uh, lawn people to get rid of all the weeds that are coming up in my lawn, and that cost me almost a thousand dollars. And it's just, I don't know what their problem is. It would cost them, you know, maybe fifteen, $2,000 to replace the fence. I don't know what the problem is.
Because this gentleman, it's been their worker bees for decades. Why is, did he say why he's not mowing it, why he's not maintaining his garden?
It was basically because it, you know, it was, well, it's too high with that, and I did say, like, well, it doesn't matter, it's in violation, you know, so if you don't have another idea, then it's in violation of our, of our code, you know, as far as how high grass is, so they have to do something.
I, I just recommend we, we notify them and.
And the burn itself is just.
Yeah. We've been too nice.
Way, way too high.
Yeah, it's not, like you said, it's not really.
No.
What you'd call a burn, it's, it's more like.
Let's send Jeff out there. The hill.
Yeah. All right, so you're gonna, you're gonna do that?
Yep, I'll take the board, uh, by another day tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you. Um, any other public comment? Go ahead.
Um, I would like to read a resolution from the Long Grove Historical Society. Resolution on Preservation of Ruth Farms. Whereas initially stated that Long Grove Historical Society states, the purpose of this organization shall be to serve as a vehicle for research and education, and as a repository for artifacts and data, geographical, genealogical, architectural, and historical of the Long Grove area, including the maintenance of properties in this area. And whereas the nineteenth-century Ruth Farm will be next to Long Grove, Village Hall has been preserved and maintained by the Long Grove Historical Society as an original historical structure of our village. And whereas the Long Grove Village Board, if this time is considering moving Ruth Farm as part of the plan to expand the current Village Hall. And whereas it is the preference of the Long Grove Historical Society that the Ruth Farm remains in its present location, and that if the structure must be moved, it be relocated to our farmhouse property located on Stempel Park Lot in historic downtown Long Grove. And whereas the Long Grove Historical Society was initially included into the discussion and planning process, um, of this proposed action for Village of Long Grove, beginning October 3rd, 2023. And whereas it will take time and resources to determine if the Ruth Farm can safely be relocated to our farmhouse property, and as of this action is being initiated by the Long Grove Village Board, the cost of a feasibility study for this should not be disclosed to the Long Grove Historical Society. Now, may now therefore be resolved that it is our primary responsibility to preserve the Ruth Farms for future generations. The Long Grove, Village Long Grove, in conjunction with the Long Grove Historical Society, should take additional time to complete a feasibility study of the farmhouse property prior to any decision by the Village Board for moving Ruth Farms, adopted on October 15th, 2023, and signed by all the outboard members.
Thank you, Jane. Thanks for reading that. Um, any other public comment? Please.
Conrad Birstenbrand, Connor Subdivision. Basically, what's happening in our subdivision is they're putting some stormwater sewers in, Osage, and they're almost complete, so I was wondering what's actually gonna happen once the water starts flowing over the hill? What kind of water management do we have in order to get into Indian Creek? And what kind of safeguards do we have to property owners that they won't have a flooding situation?
Conrad, you live down the hill, right, at the first house there?
Right.
Okay, got it. Jeff, can you answer that question?
I'm sorry.
Um, it's, uh, it's Osage, at the end of Osage where that ends by the.
Meadow, Meadow and Osage.
Yeah, Meadow, yeah, right there.
Okay, take it.
Yeah. You wanna take that?
Yeah, so the, the water goes through the new pipe that he saw.
Right.
And then, you know, goes to the corner where there's the culverts that are under the road, and then drains pretty much behind East 3RD into Ravenna. Uh, over the last few years, either township has cleaned the culverts under Meadow Lane, and then we've been working with the Nobats, uh, who, um, have cleaned out that drainage field along the backside of their property, so it think those get to Ravenna, so. But, you know, there, there are the occasions where we get the high intensity rain, and, you know, there is water, um, over there, so it does recede quickly, but it does happen. You see it all, it's, you can see the till.
Yeah, you're gonna see the, the natural flow, the water going down there, it's a curve, and then cross Meadow Lane, or are you gonna put any type of piping in there?
Uh, no plans for piping over it, that's why I intersect right now.
Cause isn't it possible that you could wash out the road there with the heavy rain?
Well, the water's getting there anyway, um, you know, through your backyard and things.
Yeah.
So, you know, right now, it's, it can get there a little faster, but, you know, in turn, it doesn't take the water that's, uh, on the other side of the road either.
Mm-hmm. But, you know, once that's, all right, on another subject, once it passes, uh, the RV place, it's gonna go into the other subdivision there. Is that gonna be cleared out, or has it been cleared out?
Yeah, Ravenna actually regraded the whole area, which is one of their outlets, I would say, in 2021.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because they had some issues with that not being constructed for plans, so they, you know, modified that, made sure that it accommodated all the stormwater flow from counters.
So that's gonna be a bump. Yeah, bumping the Indian Creek, huh?
Correct.
So, so the water, though, will be on the opposite side of the street from his house, right?
Yep.
So it's not gonna come back? As a matter of fact, it'll probably improve it.
No, we'll still get it from the back, because we have a motel and we have remax.
Okay.
And the properties from both sides going through the valley, so we'll still get the water, but not as bad.
Yeah, you won't get it from the other, cause it's crossing over now and coming back out, yeah.
We'll get the water from the, I'll call it the south side of Osage.
Yeah.
But yeah, you're, you're correct, the hotel and things over that, it's all, goes over rain to your, your yard as well, so. You did see an improvement from water flow, but it's not.
We won't go until the spring as far as, so what's gonna happen at that point?
Right.
Am I able to have another issue?
Go ahead, please, yes.
Yeah, um, we've got a, a problem with, uh, speeding cars going through the subdivision. What can we do to, uh, stop it, basically? Cause they're disregarding the sign there.
The speed limit?
Yeah, 25.
Well, can I just make a, yeah, please, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great. We did ask, I did ask for at least, I don't say, just, can we just put a speed limit sign up there? Cause you have them at the beginning on either side, so we got that done.
Right.
But you know, one of the things that we could do is close down one, the other side, is that Meadow Lane? We should, we could close it down, and you just have access through the one side, and then people won't cut through anymore. I don't know if that'd be inconvenience or not.
No, it would be a little bit, but you can force them to, uh, move around at that point, but I don't know if we could actually close it down because of the, uh, fire and ambulance situations.
Well, it could be a removable gate or something like that, that the fire department could get in. So it's something to think about to prevent the cut through, so.
Yeah, but how would that be controlled? By, um, button or something like that, to open the gate and shut it?
The same system that they changed for stop and go, like.
Or there's, they have those keys that are up to the side, right, that they, the fire department can get through to.
Open it out.
The backside.
The backside, thank you, yeah. So it's something, I mean, it's something to look at if the, if the resident, I mean, the residents would want, you know, want to have it happen, but if the, if the speeding is cars cutting through, well, then prevent the cut through.
It was closed in the past, wasn't it?
I don't think it ever was.
Years ago?
I don't, I don't think it ever was.
Okay. Who in the village would, would work with, with something like that, if you put in?
It'd be a budget request.
Well, it, it would be a, ultimately, it'd be a decision of the Village Board, as it's a public road, but it's something that the, the board can, uh, get some information on and then make some consideration of.
Okay. What type of information would you gather?
I imagine it's gonna come mostly from the gentleman over there, as well as, uh, the officers, perhaps.
I mean, the residents would have to watch.
I would say the first thing they ask is to the residents.
Yeah.
The name would allow it.
Right. Well, would the residents support it? That's the thing, is getting a petition signed or something by the residents to close it off and coming back to the board. I was just trying to, I mean, what can we do? Cause we have speeding everywhere, just everywhere, you know? And we could put more signs up and bumps and everything else and.
Lower the speed limit?
Well, it's 25, so.
No, 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 I'm saying you can lower the speed limit, and it just goes up.
Yeah. So, so, but I mean, if, um, I don't know that, that, you know, I don't think the board here would have any objection to closing it off on one side, right? So that, you know, it'd be an inconvenience to the residents, so the residents would have to say, hey, I want that, cause it's for the safety of our.
We would have to, well, let's get their approval and.
I would want, okay.
Yeah, public hearing, we get a petition signed or something like that. I know, it's an idea, I threw it out there, cause.
Well, that's, you know, that's what we're looking for.
At some point. Um, because I had suggested that that, that would alleviate a lot of trouble.
Yeah.
But it would be inconvenient, no doubt.
Totally inconvenient, so, I mean, I, I, that's, something like that would make sense to me, or you, it may or may not work, you have one way out or something like that, and can't come.
The other option that we have to consider, too, is that we have 83 as an exit there, with just a stop sign, and that gets a lot of traffic both ways, and, um.
Making left turns, fifty.
So.
Well, you have a stoplight on the other side, right?
Right.
So everything would come in through that stoplight, so, I don't know, it's just, it's an idea, cause the safety of the residents are most important, and if there's people, there's people, I mean, somebody in my office was talking about, he cuts through on Checker, and he was asking about those speed bumps and he, and Checker Road, and he goes, oh, how'd you, how'd you do that whole thing, right? So, I mean, everyone is finding all the shortcuts around here, although I don't think that's a shortcut, but people think it is, right?
Mm-hmm.
And they're speeding through there and.
Yeah.
I, I, that's, that's an idea.
We had overweight trucks going through. We have, uh, one truck that's calling, uh, used cars to the dealer across the street, I mean, through there, cutting through there instead of going around. Okay, so, if, if the residents start for us, then we can bring it up to the board at that point?
Yep, yep. We'll support you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care of yourself, Eric. I'm not, I'm not in favor of blocking more public roads.
All right, so one trustee is not supporting it.
And I would want to make sure that everybody had a chance to weigh in.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, thank you. Thanks for the comments. Any other public comment? If not, we'll do the public safety report. Lieutenant Kaiser, anything for us?
Uh, really, I have nothing to report. Uh, we're gonna be moving the, the trailer from, um.
Oakwood?
Uh, Oakwood, and then hopefully we're gonna try to keep it in the village and move it, um, further down on Gilmer and by the school, too. We've got some complaints, uh, over there, so we can get some data from that, and then when we move it, we should be able to pull some effort from Oakwood to see what the average speeds are and the times are there.
Okay, it's got timestamps also.
Yeah. I, I think you asked a question before about the directional. We can't tell.
Right, we'll get a call.
It gets cars going both ways, but we can't tell which direction.
Which direction, that's fine. As long as we see the, the timestamp and the speed, um, that's good, that's good.
So that's what we're pulling. Other than that, I have nothing. If you have anything.
Nope, just looking around.
News from today?
I'm sorry?
Your news from today?
Wait, news, I'm sorry, I can't. Did you get a ticket today, Eric?
Our, our missing, our missing bumpers.
Oh, the, the great mystery? Yes, the, uh, uh, traffic stops, or the car stops in the, in the parking lot here, were four of them in front of each of the, the large light poles, and on Monday, they were gone. And, uh, so I got my, my spyglass, and I found some, a couple spikes, then I found them eventually behind the shed here. They actually, there were four of them back there. Well, we don't know who did that, and we've, uh, asked Jeff, I've asked around, and, uh.
They speed themselves, so.
Well, so here's the other thing, too, there's markings there, though, too.
Well, they left them marked where they were.
Julie marked it.
Oh, yeah, those are different. That's Julie markings for the, the Village Hall. That's different, um, but I thought they were coming out there for.
So Jeff doesn't know about this?
No, no, that's.
I would, I wouldn't know who would be Julie and calling in a Julie for it. A little premature for the Village Hall's standard.
Did you file, did you file a police report yet?
No.
I can send it right over to our office.
We've, I've checked around and, and asked around and, and haven't found any, uh, I thought maybe some high schoolers were, but they, they didn't take it with them, they just filed them up.
There might be cameras on the schools on the corners, if you're at that interest, that might catch it.
Oh, do you think they can, they'll see over the?
At least a car coming in.
Yeah, but how, these things you can't really pick up, right?
They just moved them.
Well, there are a few, there are a few hundred pounds of tea, yeah.
You figured it had to be a forklift to pick them up.
So.
But what's, why are those, what are those markings out there for? Look, there's the Julie flags, right? So what's going on?
That's an interesting, uh, question, Eric. Um, the village could contact Julie and get a copy of whatever tickets have been, um, called in from there.
Okay. I see there's a mistake, somebody.
So we had some survey stakes out there, and GH8, you had your.
Yeah, survey stakes, um, utility marking flags, you know, things.
Right, right.
Um, I know the soil mowing contractor will be calling in Julie, but I just told him this afternoon that he needs to call in, so that would be, uh, a record for Julian.
Thank you, thank you. I'll let you go. All right, let's keep us moving. No more public comment, uh, or, uh, no more public safety reports. Uh, let's go to the consent agenda, there's four items on it. Consideration approval of the September 2023 treasurer's report. Consideration approval of the meeting minutes, October 10th, 2023, subject to non-substantial revisions. Consideration approval of the special event application. Basically, um, this is for the, another movie in the downtown, Christmas on the Ranch, and then ratification agreement and waiver and release between the Village of Long Grove and Marion Ulrich. Anyone?
Mr. President, I just wanted to mention, I just noticed now, the agenda that was laid out from the table, somehow the wrong one got printed, so it does not have, um, correct item number eight.
Okay.
It was posted correctly, so, uh, it's.
Okay, thank you.
The one that printed out here did not have that.
I have a quick, on item seven, um, I, I saw the, the application, but I, what was the communication? There's a fair amount of, couple of times where Robert Parker Coffin Road is gonna be closed between the bridge and Old McHenry, which affects businesses during the week. What's our confirmation that those businesses have been communicated?
Can I ask, well, so first off, you did reach out, right, to Ryan?
I, I think, yeah, I talked to Ryan about it, and I think we, we have a notice that went out, the contractor is.
No, no, this is regarding the movie, the film, the movie.
Oh, the movie.
Gentlemen, you're coming to.
Yeah, no, I was gonna, I was, first I was gonna ask you, and go there, but first, you, so you have not talked to Ryan yet? You were gonna reach out to Ryan, Lester?
I don't think I did.
Okay. John Bojer, can you, or can you hear us? Can you speak up? Have you talked to the Downtown Business Association about the movie?
Yeah, I talked to Ryan for sure. Um, I think Mary Precop as well. Uh, my partner, Chris, spoke with them, so I'm, I'm certain of Ryan, but, uh, not certain of Mary.
I'm just concerned neither of those are owners of businesses in that particular area.
Right.
It would be like the salon and, Ryan's probably talked to the cigars people, the, um, John Kopecky and this candy shop.
Okay. Amy, Amy, you're here, um, are you concerned about the movie as a representative from the HDLGBA?
I haven't heard any talk about it.
Okay.
So I can't, but I can certainly touch base and just reach out to upholders and make some.
I mean, they're gonna want approval tonight, what, what's their flexibility on, because there was like full days, like on a Wednesday, Tuesday, and Sunday.
Well, I think the issue is the, the RPC's gonna be closed down twice, I think was the biggest thing I saw.
I think it was the Wednesday and a Sunday.
Sunday. So John, what flexibility do you have if the merchants have issues with the schedule?
Carriage rides, yeah.
Um, it depends on what, um, what times they're concerned about. Um, I, let me take a look exactly at what we're doing on those days. Um, yeah, so the, the Wednesday one is a, is a nighttime shoot, uh, so I would imagine most of them would be closed. Uh, we could, we could certainly wait to, to close it off until later on in the day. Uh, it's also, well, we'd wanna feature it a certain way, so it'd be best if vehicles weren't going through the, the middle of it. It would be best to close that off, but we could do it, you know, at the tail end of the day and, and schedule it so that it's, uh, you know, not impeding operating hours or, you know, peak rush hour, hours. Um, Sunday, that's a, that's a day shoot, um, earlier in the morning, so I think our, I'm not sure if those businesses are open on Sundays anyways, but, um, we could try to do that as early as possible. It's, uh, it's got a little bit of, um, like a, a staging of a, um, the aftermath of a car accident. There's no actual car accident stunts or anything, it's just a sort of creative staging of the aftermath of it. And, um, so I think, you know, for safety and public perception reasons, it would make sense to keep that, that road closed for, uh, that time. We, we might not need to close it entirely to Old McHenry, um, depending on if we were gonna see the barricades or not, um, you know, we could pull them in or push them out intermittently throughout the day, uh, so leave as much of it open as possible. I think those are a couple of ways that we could, um, help accommodate anybody there and not block the, the inroads coming from Stempel Lot or from that back area behind the tavern, so that folks have ways to, to access those businesses, even if they're not able to park on, on Robert Parker Coffin.
Yeah, I'm not as concerned about the parking, it's just like, yeah, the carriage rides and the fact that that's the Sunday before Christmas, I, I, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, no, it's great concern. So, so on this, Wednesday, December 13th, it says, RPC between the church and Old McHenry would be closed.
And that's, that's.
Five to 7:00 PM, right?
Yeah, so that it probably is less concerning.
Yeah.
On Sunday.
And then on Sunday, the 17th, um, it says, no, I'm sorry, 5 AM to 5:30 PM.
I have a question about Sunday.
Yeah.
How far west will the closure go? Because the church has Sunday services and needs access to their parking lot.
Uh, we could cer, we could definitely leave that un, unimpeded for sure.
Well, it's understood they'd have to go around instead of going through the bridge, but they would have full access to their property, right?
Is that in reference to that one-way street that's right by the bridge on the church side?
No, the parking lot and, um, Robert Parker Coffin going west. So not the one-way street that will shoot the road, no, not that.
Okay, yeah, uh, yeah, I don't think anything west of the, anything west of the church parking lot would be, would be unimpeded. We're just, we're gonna be on the city side looking, I think, on the city side looking at the bridge. So, um, we just don't.
I wanna make sure the parking lot itself is accessible to the church. That's just west of the bridge.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there would be any, any issue with that. You're talking about the, are we talking about Stempel Lot or the church parking lot that's directly across from the church?
Parking lot.
That's the church parking lot that's directly across from the church.
Yeah, that, I, yeah, I can't imagine.
Yeah, I, so I was gonna say, can we make a conditional approval with, uh, the village manager to work, um, with, uh, uh, John Bojer and team there to, to work out and the downtown business association?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To work through the schedule. Are you okay with that? We'll, we'll do that and we're all, we'll approve a, you know, conditional coming up with a proper schedule so that, you know, it doesn't obstruct anything that the downtown is doing, right?
Must it be? I see days off Thursday and Friday. I'm just gonna say, have, have the conversation, but.
Yeah. Yeah, must it be Sunday is the other question too, because that would be a, that's a big day for the merchants, so.
Could we do, uh, we could do Saturday for sure. Um, if Saturday versus Sunday is better.
Yeah, no, not for the, not during the holidays, because that's when they're getting all the customers coming through and they wanna see the bridge and stuff, so. And the carriage rides going back and forth.
Is this on Thursday?
Um, no, no.
All right, so we can do one of two things. We can kick the can or we can approve it with some conditions, right?
I'm, I'm good with delegating those.
It's subject to acceptable schedule for the closure of, uh, Robert Parker Coffin as determined by the village manager.
Okay.
I don't think that would be kind of fun for our carriage rides to be dragging by a movie set if we can work together. It would kind of, it would be fun.
Did you hear that, John?
I did, yeah. Actually, uh, coincidentally, the carriage rides are actually discussed in the dialogue in the scene in question. Um, so we actually saw one going by in the distance. It, it wouldn't be the worst thing, uh, for the scene. So that could certainly work and, and I appreciate the feedback on the, uh, the weekend before the holidays as far as the, the merchants are concerned. And let me take that back to my team and see if we can shuffle some days around, uh, that week. If Saturday and Sunday won't work, maybe we can flip it with, um, the previous, the, the, the final day of the previous week before the days off or that Monday or Tuesday, we may have some flexibility there as well. So I'll take a, another look at that and, and see if, uh, if there's a, a day that we could switch. We have a few other locations that we're shooting in that are business, uh, that are businesses that are sort of contingent on when they're open and closed. So it's kind of the reverse issue of what we're dealing with, um, here with the businesses that wanna be open while we're shooting, whereas these other businesses have to be closed while we're shooting inside of them. So that's kind of why, that's why we had scheduled it on the Sunday, uh, that we did. But, uh, we'll look into that and we can also scout some, it doesn't necessarily have to be on Robert Parker Coffin Road. If it made sense to do it on a different, a different space throughout the downtown area, we could look at somewhere that would be, um, less of a problem for everybody. And, uh, we're gonna have a scout with the director and everyone coming up soon. So we can look at some other places that might be more conducive to everybody's needs that weekend.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable.
You wanna make a motion?
We appeared that, that we approved the consent agenda with the caveat that item eight is as posted on the website and item seven is subject to, um, negotiation with the, uh.
Yes, yes, mentioned by the village, by the village attorney.
I just wanna emphasize, there are three congregations that need at that church. So they need the parking lot from about nine in the morning until about two or three in the afternoon.
I, I think it seems as if he has to be talking to these people.
Yeah.
I just wanted to emphasize, we're not talking about an hour in the morning. We're talking about five or six.
But communications have to be done between them.
Just don't want assumptions to be made.
Amended to include the church there.
Live motion.
Okay, so moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, second by, uh, by trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor. Trustee Barocksky.
Yes.
Trustee O'Reilly. Trustee Tinochi.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you, John. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great week.
All right, so we don't have a village planner here. Um, I don't know if, uh, Art, you wanna, I mean, we all have the report. They're basically, they're, the architectural commission, um, had the Seasons Building, right? They, the, the owners wanna put, uh, a vaulted roof on it. So they, uh, presented an application to the architectural commission. They've made some recommendations to it and have approved the, the roof. So that's the old Seasons Building that's here. It's the Fred Sauer House. That was originally part of a two-story section. So, um, but it's great to see that they're making an, you know, investment in the building, the Seasons Building, and, um, hopefully that will, uh, work out. So that was, the architectural commission approved it. We don't really have to weigh in on it. Um, the plan commission and zoning board of appeals meeting was canceled. And then there's a note here that this, uh, meditation center on Route 22, um, they're still waiting for receipt of a completed application. Um, so really nothing, nothing new on that. And that's all we have from the report. I don't know if anyone has any questions that I can't answer, but, uh.
If you do, I will relay them to Taylor.
Yeah, if you have questions, Art will relay them to Taylor. Okay? Um, if not, then we'll move on to the next item, which is the village engineers report presented by engineer period.
Very. Uh, engineers report, this is the fourth pack yet. I'll highlight the, we're doing the on-site construction project. First, we got the pipe going on in, in on the safe road. It's, uh, kind of a special here with, uh, Conrad. The pipe installation is, would be completed today. So that was on schedule. So they've got the, the, the working work scheduled for either later this week or next week, uh, depending. The, something down number three, the road maintenance program work is, uh, going along very, very well. Uh, work in the creek side subdivision is nearly complete. They've got, um, some shoulder restoration to do over there, but all of the asphalt work is done. Uh, downtown, all of the, um, roads have been paved with the first lift of asphalt. And the second lift of asphalt is scheduled to start later this week and be completed next week. Um, I'll defer on any discussion on the village hall. And, uh, I don't know, um, manager, uh, Dan, I don't know if you've heard anything from the county on the water, um, crossing the, to do with the fire station. Uh, this is number 10 on the report, but.
I've reached out, uh, same spider and doesn't get that.
Yeah. So still working with, uh, Lake County DOT to see if there's an opportunity for the carrier pipe under applicants to grow up for the fire station. Um, no progress on that one.
So how long does it take them to respond?
Yeah, it's, I think it's because, you know, what the issue is and they've already said that it's too late, correct? Like someone, the department did. Yeah, so we're asking them to, you know, basically change their minds on that and allow it. So that's gonna be why it's not, it's positive.
Too late for what?
Put a carrier pipe in for the, a future water main to cross under Acaticisic?
If they don't pay it.
They haven't even paved that spot yet. They haven't even started.
Still gravel.
Yeah.
They're saying that it's too late to get the permit for, to have enough time to, I assume we did a, uh.
Well, yeah, if, if the village would apply for a permit, go through a standard permit review process, yes. That will take six to nine months. And that's why they say it's too late. However, is there a way to have, uh, the agencies, you know, the village, the fire department and the county all work together? I think the answer to that is yes, and just bring everybody to the table on that.
So it's been, um, several weeks now. I, I did make Mara Altenberg aware, Lake County Board member that has this area. I think I'm gonna ping her and say we're not making any progress, so.
What does that mean? I mean, we'll never have a water cycle on through Acaticisic?
No, they want it to be done after the road's completed versus.
Why did not say that?
Correct, correct. That makes a lot of sense, right?
Yeah.
You would think Lake County would want us to do it during.
You would think, you would think.
Yeah.
Would be a 12-inch diameter pipe, so the carrier pipe, right, about 24-inch diameter? There is more water than the 10.
Wait, how much, wait.
All right, so I have, I will follow up. I will take an action. Um, I'll, could do, I could go a couple of different ways in that, but let me start with Mara, so.
I mean, why start out a new road with, with respect to?
Yeah.
Were, were they just ignoring the fire conversation?
I thought we'd started this conversation with them a good six, eight weeks ago.
Yeah, but the fire station wasn't, no.
No, I know, but, okay. But, but, so it doesn't happen until?
Yeah, a little chicken and the egg. And then also, it was back in August, the county permit department said, you know, it's not likely to happen. So, but then after the fire department got approved, we re-asked the question and then it was a hard no and then now it's the appeal.
So what, that's my curiosity. What determines, it means no, you can't go to the front of the line? Does it mean no, we can't possibly get out there for six to nine? What does that mean?
I, I think the permit department is looking at it from the standpoint of village needs to get a permit for the project and that takes six to nine months. And at that point, the paving would be down and they don't want to, uh, have the village or the village contractor or even their contractor remove pavement that they already, that they just put down.
So it just means that there are that many more requests in front of us that it takes six to nine months?
All I'm gonna say is next time somebody complains to me that it takes a long time to get a permit from the village, I'm gonna say it's not six to nine months, so. It's not that long. Oh, it's not a good answer.
I, I wouldn't do that.
Okay, I won't do that. Sorry. Um, I, I'll, I'll follow, I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow.
You know, this wouldn't be so many and it's tough to repay for it.
Yeah, yes, it's our tax dollars at work.
Yes, yes. Some little force in the bathroom makes these decisions and we pay for them. Well, I think if there's so many people in front of us, so many projects in front of us, is that? Yeah, but you, you have to have some common sense too. And if, if the common sense says if, if we don't do it now, we're gonna sneak it up again.
They're gonna directional bore, they're gonna directional bore.
If they have to do it after the road is done, that's how they will have to do it.
More expensive and stupid.
Okay, it's not running. You can't, you can't tunnel.
But if, yeah, um, if the road's done, yeah, you gotta, it's actually not directional drill. You actually have to push the carrier pipe through there to scale higher. But it's more expensive, so is there a way to do it now? Is there people in front, yeah, you know, Lake County DOT is also, you know, kind of been the same boat with a lot of other companies with staffing shortages. But, uh, to trustee O'Reilly's point, you know, having the conversation about it and working through these types of things over the winter would be unofficial for everybody.
But you need to know that.
Um, the county wouldn't put it in over the winter because they don't do any, they don't allow any construction on their roads over the winter because of, cause snow removal takes precedent.
But that's what I'm saying, we need to know.
Coordinate everything.
We need to know.
But there's an opportunity in the spring to put it in before they pave. You know, that's not gonna be the first thing we'll do in the spring.
All right, I'll ask for help. I'm gonna ask for help, okay? I, I made Mara aware that I'm gonna be asking for help and just said, don't do anything yet, so I'll ask for help.
All right, happy to take any questions if there's any other ones? Can we just make sealed and put a pipe in?
Is your name Daley? Is your name Daley?
Well, back when we had the whole issue with the bridge, I said in the middle of the night, I was just gonna move it. And then it was done. But it's all fixed now, so it's all good. Thanks for the, all right, thank you. All right, so now the conversation everyone's been waiting for, discussion of the relocation of Ruth Bar. Um, Jeff, are you gonna take us through a memo you just sent to us to start? And, uh, is that a good place to go or?
Well, no, no, because I, I don't think.
All right. Okay. Oh, okay. All right, just put together a memorandum, have an update of what we discussed two meetings ago.
Just passing around.
It was emailed out, uh, a little while before the meeting, so I'll link this with that. So in, in short, the memorandum had the three options that were discussed a month ago to, uh, move the Ruth Barn. The first being moving it intact to the historical society property adjacent to the Stempel parking lot at a cost of roughly $100,000. Option two was to disassemble, transport and then reassemble the barn over at the Long Grove Historical Society property at Stempel, um, roughly the same cost, $100,000. Option three was to relocate the Ruth Barn intact, uh, to the north of, by the archery school. Uh, this would be, you know, putting it up on a trailer, uh, crossing the creek and putting it there. And that cost was roughly $50,000. Uh, since the discussion, uh, at the last board meeting and the discussion that was, uh, preceded that the week before, um, from, I think it was the historical society meeting, uh, four, three additional options were looked at to move the barn. Option four was to relocate the barn intact to the, uh, just to kind of stage it in the southeast corner of the village hall parking lot just to kind of move it out of the way temporarily so that the construction of the village hall expansion could begin. Uh, talking with contractors on this, um, that cost would be, uh, almost $30,000 to put it on a flatbed truck just to move it, you know, 30 feet. Um, we also looked, we also asked, um, some of the moving companies, budget contractors, um, responded that you could leave it on a flatbed truck trailer over there, but you'd have to rent the flatbed trailer for $750 a month. So 20, 30,000 would be to put the barn on a flatbed truck, move it to the other corner of the parking lot and put it on, you know, like temporary wood foundations, AKA cribbing, uh, as they call it in the business. Or, uh, if you just put it on the truck, did it unload it and just left it on the trailer, it's $21,000 to move it and then you'd have to rent the trailer for $750 a month for however long it stays there.
That's not really an apples to apples because that's not the final move.
Correct, correct. It would need to be moved again after that. Um, option five, kind of similar thing, but talking with contractors, you know, a crane would, you get a large enough crane, they could actually pick it up, swing the crane and put it over there. Um, it's a, you know, that is not a viable option on, you know, moving the barn from here to north of the creek just because it's a much longer move. But moving it by crane, um, that would be, and putting it on the same temporary wood, uh, cribbing foundation, uh, $18,500 is, uh, the cost that we got from Carmichael Construction. The last option that we looked at, option six, was disassemble the, the barn, uh, move it to the historical society property and then, um, you know, neatly stack the, the pieces of, uh, the members of the barn and, you know, put it back so it can be put back together later, you know, wherever that final location would be. Talking with Carmichael Construction, that would be $50,000 to take it apart, catalog, uh, how it was taken apart, move it and then put it on some temporary, um, supports over to the historical society property, uh, the parking lot, uh, until it, uh, you know, whatever action is passed that, you know, put it together, whether it be here, there or somewhere else. So those were the, the three options that we, additional options that we looked at, uh, in response to the last board discussion. So with that, I'll, uh.
Ask a question?
Yep.
Just out of curiosity, what would it take to put Humpty Dumpty back together again if it's moved that way? Do you know?
So I, I, to take it apart and put it back together was $100,000. It's roughly half of that to take it apart and stack it.
Okay, got it.
Pretty labor intensive to put it back together, so I'm guessing another $50,000.
Got it.
I mean, who would say it wouldn't fall apart if a crane picked it up?
Well, I mean, looking at picking it up and putting it on a flatbed truck, picking it up by a crane, either way, you're gonna support that, uh, say it's gonna be kind of a similar operation from the bridge where you're gonna have to put supports all around it and, you know, tell, um, spreader, spreaders on it so that it can be picked up. So that's part of the, part of the cost in doing that, you know, just taking and picking it up and moving it doesn't seem like a big operation, but, you know, you're still looking at $20,000 to do that. So there is a bit of prep work that goes into this.
I don't know, it's quiet. Um, all right, so, so the village hall, in order to put the expansion in, if, if we're gonna do this, right? We're moving along, that barn's gonna have to be moved. It's gonna have to go somewhere, right?
Yeah.
And, um, I know one of the things that I had always asked was, which was, I think, the last option here, right? Is there a way to just, you know, if we, if it doesn't get all sorted, to just move it off to the side until it's figured out, till we figure out what we wanna do with it? And I guess that cost is $18,000 approximately, right? And then the question is, in working with the historical society, you know, how, what, what are, you know, what do we do with it, right? Is it, because either way, if it's gonna go, if it's gonna stay on property, we're gonna have to get permits from the Army Corps of Engineers to go across the wetland?
Yep.
Go across the wetland. Can they proceed with the expansion plan with a barn sitting in the parking lot?
So, I mean, that's a question that we'll would ultimately give the answer, but, um, you know. know, the staging needs to be over here. I would, you know, a lot of the equipment for the building, I'm kind of getting out of my wheelhouse, so like, you know, mortar mixers and things like that, steel framing and things like that, you know, they come a little bit after the construction actually starts, because the first thing is, you know, moving dirt for the concrete.
Okay. And that building is not, that's meant to be on a slab, it's not meant to have any sort of addition that's going, addition is not digging, it's just...
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, you have to just dig for the foundations, you know, make sure.
Okay, we're not putting crawl or anything, or basement or anything like that?
High water table, I don't think that's part of the plan.
All right, good, thank you.
I'm, I'm thinking of what you just said, and I know that some of you would like to just tear it down and make it disappear, but I don't think that's what the community would like. But I do see that there's a hurdle here, and that hurdle is money. And, um, yes, the last memo that was written, was written several days before, and, and they didn't even know it. And this memo came an hour before the meeting, and they didn't know it, and I didn't know it, and so no, no plans have been made from this. So I, I think we have to be a bit, uh, patient with them, them, us, realizing what we can do and what we can't do. And I think that's going to take some conversation and some brainstorming and some perhaps begging. Um, all those things might go into whatever is gonna happen. But the, the big, the big, um, the two big issues, money and time, and, and we need both. And I would ask that we have, until the next board meeting, to find a route, a path for what we want to do and what works.
Who's me? Which we?
Well, the most we is Long Grove, not the board, but, but the residents, the Historical Society. Um, there are a lot of we's associated with the Historical Society, and I don't know who they are. But I know it's not me, and I know it's not you, and I know it's not Kent, I know it's we. So that's why I used the term. Um, so if we could have two, two weeks, is it two weeks that are at our next meeting?
Three.
Or it's three?
And potentially more based on number 15 or 13.
Okay, okay. So give us the best time to do some, some brainstorming on, on what can be done. It wouldn't be the first time that Long Grove has moved an old building.
So we agreed we were gonna wait till this meeting to do something, now we're talking about waiting another three weeks.
Oh, we just got this, I don't know about you, but I can't make this up.
So here's what we do know, five months from now, that land where the barn sits needs to be vacant, and it takes four plus months to get an Army Corps of Engineers permit. So we should get that started no matter what. We can't wait to get that permit started. If it ends up we don't use it, then we don't use it. But we can't wait another month to apply for that permit, because then we're gonna start this project behind schedule from day one, and that's not acceptable.
The other, the other hurdle is seasonality. There's, it's not just sheer time, it's seasonality, because we can't build everything at every, any time of year, melancholy.
I'm discomforted by the fact that we have an option to move it off to the side while it's all sorted. That's all I, that's all I wanted.
Can they work with it?
Yeah, that's what I wanted.
I could think of ten reasons not to do it.
Yeah.
I could, I mean, maybe 20.
Yeah.
Um, but I can also think of the best reason to do it, and that's for the future of Long Grove. So, um, all of the reasons that are monumental to do this, um, don't make me pass off, say, eh, can't do it. No, it's possible, not probable, but possible. And, and I think we, we should absolutely start working on the permit. We should, so as if this is, nobody knows we're doing this, and, and, and we're looking for paths that will work. But that doesn't mean that anybody else is going to stop working on what the, the mission is.
Jeff, could you start working on that Army Corps of Engineers permit tomorrow? Or as soon as possible thereafter?
Since you're on the meeting, he can do it, so guess.
Okay. I'd like to get this formless start immediately.
Yeah, we can apply for that, you know, a couple things. One, a permit application, a permit from US Army Corps of Engineers, doesn't have any fees associated with it, so, um, not, you know, we'll do it as far as that. And there's been plenty of permits that, you know, get withdrawn for this, that, or the other reason.
And that, and that permits to do what exactly?
That would be the one to take the bridge and cross the wetland up to the...
I mean, it's...
The barn, the barn.
The barn.
The barn, the bridge.
It would be a big operation.
It hasn't got US Army fees, but it will be Gable Hamilton fees, but that's, I think that's a good option. So it, it will be engineering costs.
Yeah, it'll be engineering costs, but, um...
Although it may be...
It'll just be a temporary, it'll be just a, just a plan for a temporary, you know...
I'm sorry, what was that?
I was just suggesting maybe we could take up a collection for the engineering fees, not as if we don't do engineering fees for each and every thing we do.
That was not my intention at all, and that was not necessary.
Oh, well, it's, it's funny, when we're doing something you don't want, we always have figures, and we always have plots that we never have on anything else. So this, this is, this is a once in a lifetime, um, and, and, and it can't be a year from now. I wish it had been a year ago, but it isn't, it is what it is. We're in a time crunch, we're in a money crunch, we're in a season crunch, we're in a people crunch, um, so we're, we're in all kinds of crunches.
Definite decision.
But 20 years from now, if we do what we want to do to go over to the building shore, of course, the, the brewery wants to buy them, and they're not gonna sell them, so, so that, that won't happen either. But, and that's, that's a concern I have, is will this fit, will this fit on, do we need to get a survey? It's kind of like, in my mind, the first thing is to have a survey that would show that we could put barns there and the school.
Jane, we gotta come?
That's why we were asking, we are saying that a feasibility study must be made of the property on Temple to determine if the barn can be placed on there. That was part of the resolution.
Thank you. I was going to ask, and I'm sorry, you don't know what I want, Bobby, and I really do not appreciate that kind of comment. I was trying to gather facts, and my next question was gonna be, what does such a feasibility study look like? And that helps quite a bit with understanding.
We're looking for a...
A tip, to you?
The creek's back there, so we aren't sure if there, if there's a flood plain back there, we have our septic sealed back there, so we need, we can't make a decision at all unless we know where everything is and whether it will fit with all the other issues coming on.
Got it.
Do you have a, do you have a permit?
No, we have no clue, and we're kind of thinking that since it's the village that wishes to move this barn, that we don't want to move barns. The barn knows that maybe the village should help these, help...
It's not like you probably should know anyone.
Well, maybe you should have help financially, saying the feasibility study, feasibility study.
All right, let's step back a second. So Jeff, help us understand, as an engineer, right, or maybe it's something from our village code, if you're gonna put a barn on a property, what would you, what do you have to check out to make sure it works?
So I think where I would start is looking at published information, you know, just tax records, tax maps, you know, where the flood plain is, for Buffalo Creek, and then also, you know, topography, things like that. That would be very helpful, I believe, that's the septic drive, right?
Yes.
So that indication of, so a creek and that indication of where you can't put anything. Now, whether that's up to date or not, don't know. Yeah, so there's the property lines, there's the flood plain, there's the topography, there's the septic, and those are all factors that would further kind of, you know, squish the area that's available. But kind of taking a look, and this is, this is helpful, it's something that we can generate and, you know, look at those. That's where I would start.
So where would we find someone for, to do this feasibility study? We have to look.
Hey Vic, what do you think? How do you think you approach this?
Well, I, I think that the discussion about getting a little more information before making a decision makes all sorts of sense. Um, the permit application process, as, as Rusty Nucci mentioned, gives us an option that keeps things on a viable timeframe. But I do think that, you know, surveying the community, what do you want to do, is important, and identifying what are the feasible options for the storage, relocation, or moving. I mean, I think those are the three basic approaches we're looking at right now.
Yeah, but what I was asking about was, how do you approach, they're talking about a feasibility study for where the Historical Society headquarters is, right, right next to the brewery? How do you approach that? What's, what's really needed? Do you have to file an application?
What does the final feasibility study contain?
Well, the final feasibility study is really gonna be site related, and then there is an overlay of what our village regulations are. Um, and, and, you know, obviously, we have the ability to make whatever variations are necessary if it's gonna be in locations that might not otherwise be permitted. But I think that just understanding whether or not and where the, the building could be relocated if it were brought over to the Historical Society's lot is an important consideration. As far as how does the village, uh, work with the Historical Society on that, I don't know what the cost of that would be, but we do have some discretion on the part of the village manager to expend monies up to $10,000 if maybe necessary. I, I don't know whether that would be something that we'd want to be doing, um, but that's, that's an option, and maybe the board might want to give some direction as to whether or how much the village might want to invest in, in helping that feasibility study get, get completed.
Would, would they get started with a surveyor?
Well, I think as Jeff was saying, there's, there's certainly public information. I mean, if there's a flood plain line that, that goes right up to the, you know, existing building, and there's not a lot of other places that it can go, that kind of defines the, the answer pretty clearly. But I, I think at some point, once the public records are reviewed, it would be potentially valuable to get a survey that will have more precise, detailed information so that there can be some real scaling as to the ability to put that site on there.
Yeah, it's much, much...
Shouldn't there be an old survey?
There are...
That's what I thought, too.
Well, someone has to know where it is and who did it.
But, you know, I was just gonna say, it's much like where the Village Hall expansion project started, you know, the first blush was going through, looking at where was, let's use the wetlands as an example, you know, where the county maps the wetlands, and that helped kind of orient and where can the Village Hall be.
The drainage ditch.
And then as the project moved forward, we got the survey, we delineated the wetland to make sure that, you know, what was found preliminarily was, you know, still viable. So at the farmhouse property by Temple, you know, you look at the published information, and then you could, you know, make the determination, you know, does this reasonably look viable or not? Because if it's, you know, it's gonna be very clear if it's not. And if it's borderline, then that's expedite, you know, the surveys and go out, because, you know, like a flood plain line, for example, it's gonna be published by the county, but you're not gonna know exactly where that is until a topographic survey is done.
Yeah, so who would, is it on us, not to start doing this, this referencing to public records? Who's doing that?
So here's my feeling about this. The village has offered, there's been a general consensus that we will move, we're willing to move the barn next to the Archer School at our own cost, at no cost to the Historical Society. Anything the Historical Society wants to do over and above that is at your cost. So we're willing to move it next to the school at no cost to you. You wanna do something else, it's your car.
I mean, that's, that's what Jeff would be doing.
Yeah, no matter what, five months from now, that land must be vacant.
I, I just think we're the only best dime, you know, at some point.
So, so, okay, so we, it, basically Vic's on the GIS mapping site right now, and, you know, it clearly shows where the flood plain is, um, and I know, um, gosh, we could project it here. Well, in any event, I think the thing is, is what could we do between now and the next meeting so that at least they know, you know, that, that there's, that it could or could not, possibly could be put there or could not be put there? There might be, you know, we can go to the public information, like the GIS mapping, look for whatever survey, walk the site, is that something we can do? Would, would the board support that? It wouldn't, I don't think this would be a lot of money, right? How many hours would it be?
I think it's not in, in the neighborhood of less than $2,000, maybe $1,500 to $2,000.
Would the board support that, at least to give some context if it can and can't be?
Because the whole issue would be over.
Yeah, if it can't be put there, then we can't...
With, with, with a, a, no, it doesn't work.
Doesn't work, and then, you know, they're not, we're not going in circles, and at least we rule that out. Would, I mean, would the board be okay with that?
Can we clarify what that ask is? Like, what's this specifically? I'm not saying no, I'm, I'm...
Well, let's help me, so write it out, what is, what would it be, Jeff?
What we would do is look at the information, prepare some exhibits showing all the encumbrances as whether it refers to them on the property, you know, the boundary of the property per Lake County GIS, where the wetland lines are, where the flood plain line is, we'll put the conservancy district line on here, because there's that on the south side of the property. And then, you know, show, you know, conceptually, you know, can, where, where could the school go, where could the barn go? Put some dimensions on that, so everybody can take a look at that and, you know, if it, based on that, if it gets run through and Taylor looks at it, that would be the next step, probably.
Yeah, I was curious what the...
Maybe, maybe we could do a straw poll on this before...
That's what I want to do.
You know, we do this all the time, but I think maybe, maybe you're putting the cart before the horse on this thing. I, I don't, I don't agree that it's a once in a lifetime opportunity, mainly because Bill educated me today about this building, you know, this was moved here in the 70s. I don't, and I don't know when... So with the school, so with the Historical Society. Okay, so let me, let me finish, please. So that's 50 years ago, okay. We don't plan to move this. The only reason we're moving the barn is because we have to, it would be destroyed, and, and I don't think anybody here has ever said, we'd like to tear it down. I don't, nobody's ever intimated that, much less said it. We're, we're, we're trying to be, I feel like I'm trying to be reasonable about, reasonable about the whole thing, while being practical at the same time. If there's one building on that side of town, and there are two of them here, three of them here, logically, rationally, it doesn't make sense to me to move one over there. This is never gonna get moved over there, so, you know, what's so bad about having a building there, three buildings here? And the, the truth of the matter is, facts are, we've been talking about this at least since March. This is not noticed as of October 2nd. We've been discussing it. We even talked about, well, gee, if we're gonna move it in the middle of winter, when the ground is frozen, which makes sense, we ought to move the perennials, too, because those, those can be replanted. We discussed that two weeks ago. We discussed that at least two weeks ago, maybe more, and we said, time is running short, if you're gonna move, if you're gonna move plants now, it's the time to do it. Nothing's happened over there, and, you know, as far as moving things, and we, we know it's gonna happen, so, and we've got 20, $20,000 to $70,000 in this bid for landscaping. Now, that, that's not all perennials, but nonetheless, it could whittle that down. There, I checked with Tone Bean last year, I think. Where's, who has... Where's, who has, who has title and/or a deed to that building? Nobody knows, nobody knows where the deed, much less the title is. By, legally, it's been there for over 20 years, so there's a prescriptive easement that belongs to the village. Okay. I, I don't, I don't think we need to make those distinctions. What I'm saying, what I'm trying to say, and maybe I could have said better, is for the kind of money we're looking at, $100,000 to move it versus 50 grand to keep it on this property, or there are already historical buildings, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense to me. And I, I would like this to be a project where we can do it together. You know, I, I don't like the tension here, and, and I, I don't know where it came from, I don't like it, I'd like it to go away. We have control over that part of it, so, you know, feasibility study is nice, but if you take a tape measure out there and figure if it's going to fit or not, right? And where the septic is, and where the wetlands are, why spend 2,000, and why spend $2,000 if the overall, yeah, it's not going to fit? You know what I mean? It's, some of it is kind of simple and easy. But it, it doesn't make sense to me to do that. If the, if it's not going to fit, we just drop 2 grand, it could go to whatever. But it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me that, at this time in October, after having put this on the table months ago, that nobody has, has researched any of this. I mean, you know, who, who made calls for, for information this past week about who you called to find this out, who you called to find that up? Jeff is always available, but I don't think anybody called him. So I just kind of feel like we keep putting things off and putting them off, and I, I do agree.
Does anyone mind if I, go ahead.
My name's Dana, I'm from the Historical Society. I, I just want to say one thing, which is that I really do appreciate everybody's viewpoint here, but I want to clarify that we have been looking at the agenda month, every month, to see if this was on the agenda. It was on the agenda in March, and not again until October. We did not know that this was being discussed. Sorry.
We talked about this two or three weeks ago.
You may have chosen to talk about it, but it wasn't on the agenda. Otherwise, we would have been here and brought this up months ago. So the fact that this is time-sensitive now is really, and this is something our board is all about, to pay attention to, that it's time-sensitive now. Please don't put that on us.
The discussion, the question wasn't Ruth's barn, the discussion was probably the reason it came up. It showed up on the agenda, probably as well, well, architects and the Village Hall.
But the problem is, we found out what your plans were for the Ruth's barn on October 3rd. That's when we found out, and I have been having conversations, we have, we've, you know, I've been trying to have, quoting meetings as I can, I haven't heard any discussions specifically about, other than move it over to where it puts next to the school, and I've been, I was talking to Greg, had multiple conversations with Greg, and he says, it's not time for the Historical Society to be, to be at the table yet. That was almost a quote, and I've heard it repeatedly from him, repeatedly. And then all of a sudden, October 3rd, boom, there it is, and we were not at the table.
So, so let's pull this back in. Thank you for that. It, it, we're here now, this is where we're at, right? So we can't, you know, we can't change anything, it's, we're here now. So, and we have this desire to expand our village hall and get that going in the spring. I still like the idea, I, I hear you throwing good money after bad, good money after bad. I still like the idea of having some feasibility study to see if it could even work there, because it'll rule out, rule it out, it may not work. It, the floodplain, septic, and everything else may make it impossible, right? At least we know, and we can, you know.
So if it, if it's this fair, are we going to spend $100,000?
No, then everything, everything is like, it's like, okay, so it could fit there, so now the question is, how much does the village pay, and how much does fundraising or something else, if they, if it wants to move there? Where does that money come from? Does it all have to come from the village? It doesn't have to all come from the village. It can come from a variety of sources. In fact, when you read this, this is how this village hall kind of came to be, right? You know?
Yeah, but we have had, okay, so there's $50,000 difference, right? We have had situations in this town where people pledged money and never made good on the pledge. So you got to have the money.
Right.
And you got to know how you're going to pay for it.
Well, it was the bridge, but anyways, leave that there.
But you have, you have to know how you're going to pay for something before deciding on the bottom line. Are we even sure that, that this building can stand the rigors of being lifted? You know, how are they going to brace it? I don't know. I, I have no clue. I trust Jeff to know.
Yeah.
I, I, I remember when they brought the farmhouse over, from, do you know where it came from?
No, I don't.
Oh, it came from '83 in Buckleboro Road. They moved it here, and it was a mess.
Worse than this?
What, worse than this? I don't know. I, I haven't been.
I mean, the, the reason I say that is, is.
It went a hell of a lot farther than, than this.
Well, that's true.
And, and, and the town, and I'm in the wood here, the, the town gathered around and, and raised money so that it could be repaired and, and maintained, and, and it was a, it's a wonderful place. I don't want to go there again, but I do want to know whether this can be done, because I personally am not going out fundraising, phone calling, door knocking, and then find out something fits.
Well, sure.
Okay, so which do we do? Do we not do it because we don't know, or do we not do it because we do know?
But you measure the thing, and you see if it'll fit on wherever they want to put it. Where are the wetlands? I mean, there's not that much room.
Is that what your carpenters and your, and your architects do?
So let me, so let me, all right, so, Chris, we have not, Chris, we have not heard from you, so do you want to say something? Or you just want to be quiet?
You have laryngitis? Yeah.
If you want to think about it a minute, I got one other thing to say.
Give him a minute, he wants to say.
When we met four weeks ago, the Historical Society Board said there was no appetite or bandwidth to do a fundraiser. And I specifically asked the question, well, if you somehow got $50,000, what would be your first priority for spending that $50,000? And the answer was not moving the barn.
That was one person in the meeting.
Well, that's a pretty important person, she's your vice president.
And I'm the president.
And I didn't hear any dissension to that remark.
The board met, so there was such huge discussion, and now we're all on board in the same place, and the comments off of which says that there's three buildings here, and the problem.
Wait, hold on, before you, before you divert from that, so now you're saying you do want to do a fundraiser, and $50,000 is your first priority to spend on moving the barn?
We'd like the feasibility study that we want.
Let's say the feasibility study says it's okay. Now you need money. How do you get that?
We're going to, we're going to discuss it, we're going to fundraise, we're going to be listening to Graham, and we're discussing it right now as we speak.
Well, that's going to take more than five months. But then we're probably going to end up putting it in the park.
Chris, do you want to say something?
Not really.
Okay. All right. So here, here's what I'd, I'd like to do, a straw poll. I, I would like to do a straw poll on, one, having, having the permit done for the Army Corps of Engineers, we're starting it. It sounds like it's at zero cost, but it makes sense. Second, is everyone okay? How about this? Are you okay with that? Yes?
Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, just that part, right? Are you okay with that?
Yes.
So what's our cost?
What's our cost?
Engineering costs are totally controllable.
Which is going to be what? $1,000, $2,000? Okay, thank you, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Bobby, you okay with that? Okay. Second, it would be another approximately $2,000 to do the feasibility study over at the Historical Society location. Are you okay with that?
We're to cooperation, yes.
Are you okay with that?
Well, you're just going to pick up a son and order a feasibility study?
We're going to, no, Jeff's going to do it, he's going to, we're going to have our village engineer do it.
Is that the feasibility study, or is that just a bare bones, go-no-go?
Well, hopefully we'll yield to the.
On that, I'd want to come back and redefine.
I, I guess maybe the question is, Jeff, is that something that is a stage type of thing, that you can do a, a first step in it, and then determine whether or not there's still a possibility, or is, I mean, it may, the decision tree may be, there's just no place to put it there from just looking at some of the public records, but if it appears that you can do something, then it might require some further study. So I presume that's how you'd go about it.
That's, that's what I just want to clarify, what we're, what we're thinking. If that's the answer, you know, oh, it might be more of a maybe.
Okay.
Oh, jeez. But at least, I mean, okay, so, so again, when, I mean, I know we're ballparking it, you didn't give us a proposal, but you're our contract engineer, you can start putting together what needs to be put together to do the analysis, right? And if it's somewhere in the middle of it somewhere, it's like, it's not going to work, you'll be able to say, I'm stopping here.
That's the part we stop, if you like, it's not going to work.
And do you need extra money in case you have to do more steps, so we can get to a decision? Yes or no?
I would say that would be the next step, and let's see where the, the first, working at the public information goes.
I think we need to set a bar where the Historical Society needs to pay the next portion. Say we pay the next, the, the first $2,500. If it has to go beyond that, then, then we have to have somebody, either their organization themselves, or some contributor. I don't think, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want to see us going alone.
Okay, so, so maximum $2,500 to do the feasibility study?
Is this, um, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
Is it realistic to ask for that by the end of the next week, Jeff, so that everybody has a chance to truly absorb it before we come back in a public meeting? Pardon me?
No, 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 I'll get that put together, just.
No, it's not realistic to do by next week?
It is realistic.
It is realistic to do by the end of next week.
Oh, good. Jeez, we heard it the other way, yeah.
Is it realistic to do by the end of next week?
So everybody has a chance to believe the orbit.
You will have it done by the end of next week.
Well, that means, yeah, it's a bullet stick.
Well, that was my intention, that everybody had a chance.
Public information, we'll give it there.
Thank you.
So, but you want to, you need some, yes, in, in this.
Chris.
Art, just kind of just, just reset the whole thing. So we have a building, we're not really sure who owns it, right? The actual building, is that correct, from a legal perspective?
It appears it's been sitting on the property for almost dead-on 50 years.
We, we actually, Art and I talked earlier, I guess it was late last week, and we have ordered a title commitment for the Village Hall property, so we understand, not just for purposes of this, but actually for anything else in connection with the development of the expansion, what the limitations, if any, are on this site. That may or may not clarify the rights to that building, but if it, if there is nothing expressly there, that's a village building, period.
Okay. The school, too.
Yeah.
How long does the title commit, what's title?
I, I was hoping that we'd have it, you know, sometime middle of this week.
Okay.
We haven't gotten a firm, yeah, Chicago title is, you know, they usually say three to five business days, and then it usually takes seven to 10.
Yeah, so next question. So the Historical Society property, even though they're a 501(c) whatever, that property really is private property, isn't it? It is, as pure definition, it's private property.
Right.
So again, this is a situation where we're saying, let's expend public funds on surveying what's essentially a private property. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, although I would say that it's in the context of a village project. So I, I don't see any constitutional problem about expending public funds for private purposes, because this is ultimately a public project.
All right, thanks for that clarification. I think we walk softly around that issue quite frequently, right, when that kind of comes up. So thank you for that.
I can talk about water, mate.
All right, so I'm not sure how I feel about any of that right now.
All right.
I think it's public, it's public funds used to survey a private property, and what do we do with that?
You know, I'll just go back to, you know, I think the interesting thing is, and you have this in front of you, and you probably know, but the Historical Society was created basically in 1974 to accept the Draxler Tavern over there.
Right.
So we have this kind of unique relationship that goes back all the way to 90, you know, 50 years ago, right? And so for me, I kind of almost feel an obligation to do it from that perspective, just because of, you know, that's how this whole thing got started a number of years ago. We wouldn't have a Historical Society, we wouldn't have a village hall, right? And I, I just think that, I think that we should expend a little bit of money and see what we get out of it, so we kind of, we can rule it out, or, you know, say, yeah, it's a possibility, and then, then it starts a lot of other planning, right? What do we do? Because we can't delay this, so we'll have to figure that out, you know?
So we do feasibility, we do a feasibility study, and it says, yeah, it's fit. Then what?
Then what?
Well, that's, that's where more discussions have to happen, and they haven't, well, they haven't had time to think about it yet.
But are we, are we giving the Historical Society a veto over our decision?
No, no.
Okay.
No, it's our, it's the board's decision, but in collaboration with them, it's.
I want to collaborate, I think I was the one who said we need to ask and to have that opportunity. But I, just applying it, it's, it, I, it does seem like what I'm hearing is a request for what are the possible decisions after that, and it would be helpful to understand decisions and repercussions as best we can understand them now.
Yeah, I don't know that somebody, does somebody want to try to map those all out right now, or?
No, I don't, well, I'm not trying to make a big hairy thing, but I think, you know, it's okay, you know, you want to go kill all of the mosquitoes here, and you end up killing, you know, putting DDT, and it kills this, that, and, you know, and the downstream thing can be unexpected.
But, so, so Bobby asked that, defer a major decision until the next meeting, right? So in the meantime, though, it would suggest that what can we start, because the clock is ticking. What can we start doing? And it was thought, you know, we'll, we'll do the, you know, get the permit going, so the Army Corps of Engineer, and then if we could do this, too, at the same time, at least we'd give, by the next board meeting, we'd have some information, the Historical Society will be able to meet amongst themselves and start thinking, hey, if we were able to fundraise, or we were able to do this, what could we possibly do? Right? What, what could we come up with? And maybe we'll have better information altogether at the next meeting.
One would hope.
That's, that's kind of where my head's at. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's how I'm thinking, so.
That's, that's where I am, too, is we're either in or out, and, and at some point we're going to decide that, and with as much information as we can, and, and this will be the, the big one. And then, and then it's, and then it's the money.
I don't, I don't think that it's understood that the foundation for this farm has to be support. It's not, it isn't just, it isn't just $50,000, that's a moving expense, but you can't put it on bricks again. It has, Art, Art, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, Jeff, your numbers include, like a concrete slab.
Piers.
Piers, piers, which is like another $25,000, right?
Right. That's included in the 47.
Okay.
Yeah, moving and the concrete piers, if you put it back there, 47 total. Is that right?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, move it across town.
Yeah, different story.
Fifty plus, plus the foundation, the piers.
A hundred plus.
Okay. So, so my question is, even if it's feasible, then, then, then what? You say, okay, feasible, are we going to, are we going to put it over there and, and give the Historical Society $50,000 toward moving it, because that's what it would cost us anyway, for example? Or are we going to say, okay, you know, stays here? And if, if, if we're going to say, okay, stays here, then, then let's, let's acknowledge that now.
I'm, I'm not sure that I'm ready to say that yet, so.
Okay, okay.
Me personally, because I don't. My, me personally, because I don't know what they can help out with too, so, you know what I mean?
I'm just putting it out there.
And, and I think we have to figure out a route, and by route, I mean money and, and places, um, before we go any further. And we need to know first, can we do it?
Right.
And then how do we do it? And, and, and maybe, if I'm really of instinct, I could say, and then some, at some point we have to decide, we can't do it. For, for a right of recent time that goes up there never to be heard of yet.
It's, it's not really, you have a log on that. If it, if it goes over here, there's no reason that it can't do it.
Well, in order for it to be usable, we got to have, have it.
When was the last time this was here?
I know, that's what I'm saying.
What happened this month?
We have a, so Lake County Historical Alliance here. And we hosted that, the Lake County Historical Alliance here for their quarterly meeting. And we, it was logistically extremely difficult having multiple locations to get each spot staff because two buildings are over here and then we had the barn house and then we had the meeting at the, at the, the, from the field and then we have the bridge. So we had lots of locations going on.
We did do it.
And we did it, but it was a struggle. And that's one of our reasons, when you're talking about moving it back there, well, that sort of tucks the barn even further back and most people don't even know the schoolhouse is back there. It's because the stuff is tucked back so far. And logistically, if we have, I mean, just hypothetically, we have all the buildings over next to the barn house, then we could actually have a campus or we could have, have a building open one day a week, have people come through tours. It'd be easier to do tours, the, the draw for the village, I've talked to Ryan about it and he's excited about the whole thing because we draw more people into the village to come to our complex and then spend money on it.
How often do you have those meetings? Regional meeting?
Well, this is the first time we've hosted in a long time. Logistically, it's hard because having-
I understand. It used to be, we were in the children.
We, we used to-
We used to come up on the week. How often do you have children in school over there?
Is school-
School program?
That changed.
Core, it's not common core anymore.
No, it's not common. And it, it was when Nikki was in third grade and they didn't want to do it the year before. They, they couldn't tell me that a person just took the toll on her, that their third graders couldn't do it. So they did it that year and next year. Probably just on the EDR. And then she was two orders and a Devon, third grade.
Okay, thanks. But that's a little needed, can't start it again.
Right, that's right.
And seniors, it's used for seniors, um, over the years, in here, in Boston, we came in senior tour group. We could do just boy scouts, girl scouts.
It would be easier to actually do the scene because coached by seniors to do the tours. But when we're talking about two locations and the walking in between, it becomes difficult. Whereas if we had it on, on one property, it would be easier to open our buildings to the seniors and to tour groups and to the boy scouts and the girl scouts.
And believe me, we talked about this all the time.
Okay.
Okay, so- The question is, not for an answer today, but just to ask yourself, is anybody, does your own family want to do something? Okay, how much is this going to cost and where's the money coming from? And what am I not going to do because I'm spending money on this thing? Sure, it's a great idea for all the reasons you say it, but if you're going to build buildings, you're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars, which has got to come from somewhere.
Right, are we-
And that's two hundred thousand, it's not going to be spent, and maybe other things that would be a priority. So that's something you need to ask yourself.
Good question. But right now, we're, all we're worried about and thinking about is the real part.
So, so can I, can I bring this back? So is everyone okay doing what we're calling a feasibility study, no more than twenty-five hundred dollars to see if the-
Two grand.
All right, two grand, whatever the dollar amount is, okay. So no more than two thousand dollars to let Jeff start doing some basic work so that by next board meeting, we'll have information as best we can as to whether or not the barn can be moved with the historic society profit.
By next Friday, so everybody-
By next Friday.
Not next board meeting, next Friday.
By next Friday, by next Friday.
But just so that everybody actually can.
So are you okay with that? Uh, Anne, are you okay with that?
I am okay with that.
Bobby, are you okay with that? Kent? Is that a yes?
That's a no.
Nope?
I'm not in favor of-
All right, that's, okay. So, all right, so it's a no. Uh, Chris?
Funding wise, where does that come from? Does that come from future grant money for community grant funding or?
Existing, existing reserves.
Well, it should have come from like community grant money or something like that. And that's what the grant program was, there was only four of which stuck like this.
I think that would be, is something that might be appropriate.
I, I would, I would be in favor of saying this can come from that community grant.
Yeah, I would think of money.
If we have any left, that's what we're- Sorry? All right, parameters.
Yeah.
We went through that whole thing, you know, so then we did.
We'll have to put a line out in the budget. Is that okay?
I mean, pretty much.
Okay, so yes, 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 no, I'll say yes, so. We have direction? Jeff?
We don't need to learn three.
Army Corps too, Army Corps also. It's a struggle, so. We don't, we don't need to vote, we have a struggle.
All of that's within Art's authority under the village manager and I think he has clear direction from the board.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thanks everyone.
He's got your work cut out for you.
I know, I know.
By next Friday.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep us moving. We're now into the village president trustee reports. Um, we're now in the village president trustee reports. Now in the village president trustee reports.
Tempted to use that gavel for the first time, aren't you?
I, I am. Um, the only thing I'll, the only thing I'll say, will say was, I was asked at the last minute of Thursday to try to get a letter to our legislators, right, Representative LaGoffin, Representative Said, Senator McCaughy, and suddenly this nice letter appeared in my mailbox, which I think was your idea, which was about trying to get the funding, um, during the veto session, to try to get funding for the one point five or one million dollars that's needed to do the study for, to convert the Route fifty-three into a state park for the IDNR to be able to accept the money. So I, I, Saturday morning, I did get the letters out, that somehow there was, thank you very much for having somebody offer to write it for me and I put it under my signature. Um, I was bugging people to try, to try to find the resolution we passed in support of the Route fifty-three corridor task force vote and I found that too, got it out. And then I got a, got a nice note that I copied you on from Nabeel Said that said that the, um, that the Lake County delegation has, has signed a, a document that they're sending to the governor and the speaker and the senate president, right? Requesting the one point five million dollars. So I don't know where this is headed, but, uh, our voice was heard, Hawthorne did the same thing. I don't know if you heard of it. Yeah, they did, they got theirs out as well, yeah. Because I talked to Barbara Cliff tonight, so she was appreciative that we got those letters out and-
Are the, are the people who are opposed to this, are they speaking out?
I don't think we have anyone, Lake County's a hundred percent behind us, right?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of Mungaline or, or, or any communities that really don't want this.
Mungaline's the only one that spoke up.
You're the only one that's ever been on record, right?
Well, then, then that would be my question, saying, are they speaking out?
No. You know, we don't hear anything.
We're not hearing anything.
Not that we're aware of.
So, and so in any event, I mean, the, um, the bottom line is we, you know, hopefully something will happen out of this veto session. Who knows where it's going to go, right?
Who knows?
There might be a second one in November, is what I'm hearing, so.
Is there a second one yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so who knows? All right, that's all I have in my report. Um, Trustee Brodsky, Trustee Brodsky?
I'm sorry, I was rudely interrupted by-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Rudely interrupted.
Politely interrupted at the inappropriate moment. Um, just a couple of maybe questions and nothing else. I noticed actually when I'm down with the packet, the police report data that's currently in the packet has not been updated in many months, probably like since June, July. Um, there's a lot of like graphs at the bottom of the data that I believe have not been updated. And that's in whatever section it is under like traffic reports or-
Any issues to do that?
Or did you, you found that in the packet?
Yes, in the packet.
It's not further down, yeah.
Yeah.
And you may have noticed in the packet further in that discussion, there is the Clark mosquito, um, report that thankfully and appreciatively, somebody has posted in there recently. So the October report is saying that West Nile has really upticked in Lake County in the recent past history, like last few weeks. Um, and that's because of all the rain we had. Hopefully the frost will wipe out the larva pretty soon and that'll put an end to the mosquito season. But right now, West Nile was pretty prevalent in our communities, so please be cautious. And that's all I have to report.
Thanks, thanks Chris. Uh, Trustee Kritzmar?
I, we met, I met with Art and Dana.
We're, we're all there right now.
Not everybody speaks as quickly as you. We met to, on the first pass, basically, Art and Dana have produced a calendar for the budget for setting next year's budget, which ends obviously in April of next year, including budget amendments, making sure we have capital projects and things like that. Normally, this would be something looking like a call for projects, that kind of thing. I have agreed to be the point person for that at this point, given everything else on everybody else's plate. Um, also understanding that since we are seeking a new village manager, we're not really looking for a lot of, any new initiatives that aren't already on the table, that we already do understand. Um, that's not to dissuade anybody from being creative, but probably, um, in the next six to nine months is not the best time to embark on something brand thinking now. So things that we put in, we had an ad hoc capital improvement project committee last time. That put together a five-year capital improvement project. Uh, I don't think there's anything particularly materially changing in the list of projects. Maybe the timing has, but if there are new initiatives that you think that should be on either the regular general budget or our capital budget, I can send out last year's capital improvement plan or Dana can.
In, or after you have it, put it in the finance folder.
Okay, I'm not sure if everybody's got access to that or not, but we, we can send that out on email or, or whatever. Um, but it was a really, I thought it was a good conversation, they seemed to be happy with it. Um, but I'm really glad that, the schedule they put together, that we're adhering to it, it's sooner than last year. Um, and so we're moving forward. So the ask for this, A, that's an update, you don't need to do anything about, about like the schedule is moving forward unless you're interested in it. Um, B, there is a request that if there are projects you want to put into next year's fiscal budget, that's May first next year to April thirtieth the following year, send them to my way. I have said I will like aggregate and assimilate all of that. Our next conversation will be, I think, November first, second or third. We're meeting with the auditor on the second, so either the first or third, maybe it's the sixth, I think it's the sixth.
If we get the-
It'll be before the next board meeting. You're looking like you're puzzled.
No, I actually, no, you did, I was distracted and I apologize.
Okay.
You asked for the next six to nine months that we not come up with.
Any new projects that you, we have, we haven't already discussed in terms of a capital improvement plan? You were part of that session last year, that's so. Take a look at the five-year capital improvement plan. Um, yes, not saying never or no, but saying, given the fact that we are going to be onboarding a new village manager, probably not a good time to be embarking on something that is really new, that we've never discussed before. That's all. So we've already got stuff in plan, for instance, like doing a pathway plan. That's already something that's in this year's expense budget. Um, we've got things in our capital budget over the next couple of years, hoping that, you know, water, schoolhouse, all those sorts of things. So those are the two things, basically, well, three things. Schedule they put together is great and we're adhering to it. Call for any projects from everybody else. Really, it's going to be from Art and Dana talking to like department heads. Okay, so they'll come up through Jeff and everybody else. And three, understand we're meeting with the auditor on November second, so we'll probably have them to stay next time.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything, Art or Dana?
Our new-
Oh, that's right, oh, and Art and I had fun going over to BMO today. Um, we have a account set up, we had an account set, still have an account set up that's really for the online payment. Um, and it was meant to be the one that's, you know, accessible there. We've really let money go into it, we've never taken money out of it. We took over a million dollars out of it, moved it over to one of our other banks where it's going to now get something more like five percent interest instead of dirt. So one point two million got-
And, and the one thing that I asked Art about, it's the Max Safe account, because they put it in several-
It's collateralized, it is, the way, the way Wintrust-
Yeah. Our each way money was in the most.
The way Wintrust, so it's getting over five percent and they can stage in basically collateralize the entire amount so that it will be FDIC insured.
Yep, the Max Safe account, yep.
So we feel pretty-
Max Safe.
Kudos to Debbie.
It's their branding, yeah.
Kudos to our-
Scattered among their various benches.
Yeah, and I had no idea when, I had no idea we had that much money. Because that's, that's another thing, it's like, how do we get visibility? I looked through all the financial statements, I don't know what, where do you see that there's one point two million dollars sitting at that bank? How do I know that? I didn't know.
Oh, in the bank totals. Um, there's a, it's on the financial, it's in the, it's been in there, you see a spreadsheet, bank totals.
Bank totals by bank?
Yes.
But how do you know how much, but how do you know how much interest that account's earning?
Oh, you don't know that.
So you don't, because I went and looked, right? You don't know that, oh, it's earning zero dollars, right?
That's a good point, that would be a good dashboard to try and create the, to make it easy.
Take that information though. Um, um, because I, one of my communities, we, we have our money in the same entity. And they, they have it in all the banks and if, if you set up the online account, you can pull up the data that way.
Yeah, we have accounts in three different banks, that's plus the UBS. So just so you, it would be probably helpful for this board to have a dashboard that makes, now that interest rates are not zero.
Yeah.
That probably would-
And you looked at the treasury report, how much money was from interest now? We're weighing.
Yes, that's, on the treasury report, we're, we're almost, in, in five months in, some of our things were at our budget for what we thought was going to be interest. You see that in our general reserves, we're carrying very high general reserves right now, waiting for some of those capital improvement projects that we've designated for next year and the year after. Um, so that's why we're earning so much, is because we're holding on that money. We've actually, to an earlier conversation, we've got the money in hand for some projects we plan that we know we can't do this year for various reasons.
Right.
Can you put our money in there?
It is.
It is.
It is good.
It's got to be in its own fund, but yes, it is.
Well, thank you for that, thank you.
Oh, so thanks, so thanks really for that alert on that one. Our bookkeeper Debbie over at Sidler.
Right.
She is, she is, um, sometimes not the warmest, fuzzyest person ever. She is amazing. Um, we do have a sort of keepers and risk theory, that's a different discussion. If, like, if she ever wins the lottery, we, we got some work to do.
Thank you, well, thanks for that report. Um, Trustee O'Connor? I'm sorry, did I? Oh, Trustee O'Reilly?
I have three things. One is, when you're talking about capital, um, plan, something that, um, our previous village manager and I had proposed on, most maybe a year and a half ago, and it's assholes in the downtown. It's something we have to do. Um, we, we have too many people here, they, well, the plumbing problems and, and all. So at some point, we have to put this on to talk about what we're going to do, how we're going to do it. There are lots of different options. Um, one of the, the really, well, two possible good options is that, um, Brian and Dave have bought the Hudson Four building and they're going to put a good bathroom in there that will be open every day for the public. And then, um, Jesse is possibly going to do the same thing. So that's going to take care of, that's the kind- So, that's going to take care of that kind side of town. But we have to do something on the other side. So, somewhere, put that somewhere that we can talk about it sometime.
Okay.
Yeah. That was in my, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt your flow.
And then, are we going to do lights?
Oh, yeah. What about, what is going on with lights? Do you, has anything happened this year?
Yes. Well, I, I, I sent you this stuff about the light for Archer. And I've never heard another word.
You sent it to me?
I sent it to both of you. Well, no, maybe I just sent it to Art.
I don't remember, so. I don't have to.
Because, well, and I think Ryan sent it too. Because their, their order, have they ordered already?
Yes, yes, they have ordered ours.
Wait, what, what?
Yeah, I don't know that I have that. I don't know that I have.
Oh, okay. I thought you.
I don't know that I have email.
No, no. So, Christmas.
So, what is the plan?
Like we did last year.
Yeah, everything's going to be the same from our end. We did have, we had a really good year, so we have, we had like 10,000 more to play with. And we're doing some kind of like Instagrammable sites in each quadrant. But my recollection was that you guys paid 4,600 last year to do Archer.
Yes.
And I think Ryan said it was like 4,700 was the quote for this year. I think it went up by a hundred bucks. It, I think it was, it was quote.
Yes. It was underfunded. Yes. I think it was 4,700 to Archer this year.
Was there an application or something filled out? Or I'm lost, so.
Maybe if they could send us a proposal. I'll ask Ryan for both things. A proposal for holiday lights and also a proposal for the bathrooms.
Okay, yeah.
I don't, I don't remember seeing it, because I respond to everything, so.
I think we do, we did get something, because we did, Ryan did say the price of what Archer was.
Right, right, right.
Seems that 10 grand could be used to move a, move a spoon. I mean, if you really think about it, if you guys have filled up with 10 grand, boy, I, man, it's something to think about.
But she's not, she's not a sort of.
I understand that completely, but I'm sure, I'm sure.
I know, I know, I know. And then the third thing is, just so you know, after their meeting, I, I don't use the King's English, and I sent you all the minutes that I always send to Bill. So, if you don't want them, let me know. If you want them, because the last one was full of inspiration. And, and, and so, I, I do them right after I come home. I don't spend much time on it. I just put the facts down.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Because, as a matter of fact, they're meeting in, in a week from now to start working on the other side.
End of report?
Good news.
End of report?
Yes.
Thank you for that report. Trustee Tanucci?
No report.
All right. So I'm going to ask, I cannot make the November 14th board meeting, I can't make it on Thursday. Everyone okay with moving the meeting? Otherwise I won't be there, so.
You won't be there on Wednesday? If it's Wednesday?
No, I, I get back in, I get back in around, because I'm coming from Miami. I get back in.
4:58.
You know it's my flight, I get back in at 4:58, so. Might be a little tight. I can try to be on Wednesday, so.
We have to start early too.
Right.
So we have to start at, at.
I think Thursday.
We tried to do it.
So the goal was.
Here's my, here's your. Okay. I have, I have a conflict, it's another volunteer kind of thing on Thursday, and Rick said, the Gov HR guy said he was easier on Wednesday. We don't have to start this meeting at 7:00, we could start this meeting at 7:30 and our pre-meeting at 6:00. But hopefully that.
It'll be very tight, I mean.
I'm likely going to be here.
Well, I'll do my best. I mean, that's all I can do. I'm crazy with things.
I think we have to plan this, that you are here. Not an empty.
Okay. I've had bad experiences with planning things around airplane arrivals. Planes have a way of being late.
Really?
And I've kind of learned my lesson.
Well, I mean, I want to be here, it's an important meeting.
Yeah.
It's the one that, you know, we're going to talk, executive session about the village manager candidates. I'm sorry, I, that was the one I knew that was going to be a problem, and I can't, couldn't get out of it.
So what night does it need to be?
Thursday night, that week.
And what time?
Six o'clock.
No, but.
No, that's what you're talking about.
That's, that's what.
16.
No, I'm, 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 I have another conflict Thursday.
I'm going to owe you lots of dinners, I haven't paid you the last one, so.
You still haven't paid me the other one.
Pretty needs an hour and a half of our time. And you've got eight people, that's only what, 10 minutes per person if I did my arithmetic in the bathroom.
He's going to go through all the people with us.
He's going to send them ahead of time, so you'll have a chance, you'll speed things up a little bit.
Um, I'll ask it ahead of time, so we can chew on that.
He said he would have it by the 10th, is that what?
Friday before, the Friday before.
Is that the 10th? I think it was.
Okay.
Friday before.
Start at 5:30? I just feel like this is such an important topic, we don't want to.
Can everyone be here? Well, who can be here at 5:30?
Yeah.
I can be here at 5:30.
I'll make it at 5:30.
My, my conflict.
Yeah, Thursday. That's the.
And well, are we doing the candidates first or last?
First. There's a thing with to do the executive session first, yeah.
Yeah, my conflict is 7 to 8.
So you missed the board meeting, but you could be here for that.
Yeah.
So it's Thursday, the 16th.
What about you, Chris?
I'm just feeding cats that day, so I'm good.
And it, it was Friday the 10th that he said he would have the stuff to us, so we would have it by Friday the 10th.
What do you think?
Thursday I can make it, Wednesday I have a conflict.
And Vic, Vic might just come for the board, the.
Right, I, I will.
You don't need to be here.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would roll in late.
Could you bring dinner?
So I'm appreciative, if you're flexible and move the meeting, and I thank you for that. So thank you.
Will you be feeding us?
What, feeding what?
If we're here at 5:30 until 9:30 or 10:00.
So, if I have to buy a pizza or two, let's do that, so, fine.
I don't need one.
Or three, I don't know. Whatever. So we'll do, we'll do, we'll figure out how to get food here. How about that? Yeah.
Just make one meatless.
One meatless, okay. All right, so we'll have to figure out who likes what. All right, so are we good with that? Are we good?
So what's our start time, Bill?
5:30.
Just to be sure, did you send them out?
Yes.
Can I circle back, Bobby? Did you send out minutes? The HHL TVA, you're saying you sent minutes out?
Yes.
I did not receive that, so. Circle back with you.
I know, I've been getting them, I have not been sending them anyone, but.
Did I send them to Art to send out?
He sent them to Art and me, I know that.
I don't know, I'll send them again.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
All right, so village manager's report.
Just if you have any questions on the report, I tried to put a lot of information in there, so give me a call, whatever's in there. You can see some of the things that are coming up in the future. And, any questions, just give me a holler, so I think that covers that.
So you've visited with Bobby Reed and Tom, do you need to visit with me, Chris and Jamil Mohamed?
If you guys, you know, it's water under the bridge. I think we're fine.
At this point, yeah.
I was wondering, the report that you showed, the three, I think you have the conversions of your options, what you're doing with the villages, are there any ways that I could get a copy?
I sent you one. Thank you.
If you want a paper copy, I'll give you one right now, too. You want it?
Dana may have one.
Dana have one?
That's, that's.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, Dana will get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just take it. Okay, so you have one more item that you want to talk about?
Yes. Got the discussion regarding filling the assistant to the village manager. I've got two sections of this. One is to fill the vacancy, and the second is to what to do during the interim. And I think I've sent you folks a copy of the draft job description for the assistant to the village manager position. And I've kind of outlined what we're trying to do there. Essentially what we're trying to do, Natalie has left, well, this last Friday was her last day, and we're trying to get someone to replace her. That's a budgeted position that you've had before, so we're not creating anything new, we're using the existing position to fill it. We're doing a wrinkle on this, though, in that this position, one, it's defined as assistant to village manager, because in the city manager profession career track, where you go from assistant to the village manager, to assistant village manager, to village manager. And we want to have the assistant to the village manager rather than a project analyst or management analyst, because we think it'll, I think it'll attract more people, in my experience. It will attract more people for that position. The wrinkle in the job description is that this job description is focused on that person not doing a lot of office work, but doing a lot of project work, and then assisting with the office as needed. When Dana and I are doing different work and different projects, it's very hard for us to sit down and focus on one thing for any extended period of time, and we'd like this person to do that. We have a range here that I sent you, a dollar amount, and I basically will, in this part of the discussion, this is about the assistant to the manager, I wanted to get your permission to, to post that job and hire that position. And I'm, open it up.
I'm, I'm sorry, it didn't do it right. Where was that in the document?
It was.
I thought it was 55 to 65. Thank you.
And Natalie was making 65, so I think that's reasonable.
What do you need from the, what do you need from the board?
Approval to, to post the position, advertise it, i.e. advertise it, and then also to go ahead and, and hire that person. And if trustee wants to be part of the interview process, that'd be great. If you don't feel the need for it, that's fine too. Whatever your pleasure is on that, but if I basically want to move forward.
Does everybody here have?
Have one, sorry?
Title? Does every person who works here have a title?
Yes. A title, a title, yes.
The janitor has a title, the landscaper has a title, everybody's got a title.
Title, yeah. It's in it, it goes a job description with it.
I don't know how we got here. I, I, I just think it, it looks funny to have a village manager and an assistant village manager, and an assistant to, to the village manager. It's kind of like, what does anybody else do? I mean, it, it, it's just, it's not, because there's 50 people here. It's, I, I mean.
I'd focus on the, the job description itself rather than the title. I think the title is going to attract more of the.
Well, we haven't done them very well lately, frankly, from my perspective. But I, I'm sure I'm outnumbered on this.
I understand, they're just standard titles in municipal offices, right?
Yeah, I didn't.
Well, I, I could include you in on the line.
Okay, include me in all you want, but I find that really highly disrespectful of our current employees and staff, or disrespectful to our current employees and staff. I really don't think that's an appropriate public assignment, I really don't. I just think it's out of line.
That you may think.
Chris?
I just did, I just said it, and you could, you could quote me on that in a minute. I just think that's way out of line, trustee O'Reilly. I think you've got great people sitting right in front of us, who all collaborate and hire them.
I didn't say anything about it.
But you just did. We haven't done well lately. No, I just agree with you.
Yeah, no, they, they're.
Okay, okay, so let's, so let's, so first off.
Our better improvement.
So, so we, we're down, we're down a person, Art's going to try to find a temporary person through.
That's true, that's the second talk. First, I want to get the approval on assistance to the manager and advertising and hiring that, and then if, if one of the board members wants to be a member of that interview committee or two board members, that's, either way, it's great. Just let me know.
I'd love to have two sets of eyes on everybody to hire, I really truly would. May I ask this real philosophical question, that for really deciding today? To Bobby's point, is our system the correct system, given the state of everything? Our village, the employment market, the economy, the turnover at pretty high levels within our structure, and we've lost two village managers. You know, you could debate the interim manager, the previous interim manager, his success. Should we look at doing something different going forward? Could some of that have been mitigated if, just if, the village president, the board president was a full-time paid position instead of a very dedicated individual who's not a full-time employee? I mean, do we want to restructure our little village government to make it more sense, to make more sense in terms of stability, longevity, executive presence within the staff on a regular basis? Could any of that have been mitigated by having a full-time president on staff on the payroll going forward? I know that's something that maybe is a little controversial, I don't want to throw it out there like that, but, but just think about it, they had the executive who was permanent, who at least was going to be here four years, and that executive leadership was working with staff on a day-to-day basis, could some of those challenges we have with the other managers maybe have been mitigated?
So, you want to.
And we can set structures.
Structurally, we can have a, the compensation for village president commensurate with what might be a full-time position, but it would not be a staff member, it would always be an elected person.
Right.
We could not implement that until the next term of the village president, whenever that is. And whether or not you put that as a full-time salary, however you might evaluate that value, doesn't change the statutory responsibilities of the village president. So, there's a, we, we could by referendum change the structure of the village, but that's a, an altogether different issue than just a decision of the village board.
I appreciate that, thank you. Good for thought, like you said, just throwing it out there as, are we doing this all right?
I believe what Keegan has something like that, where the elected official is the lead administrator.
City of Chicago.
Yeah, city of Chicago. It's a strong mayor form of government.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, that's not what we have here.
Okay, so, that's.
That's not a personal comment.
No, that's.
That's just the way.
This conversation, obviously, obviously we can't make that decision tonight, but we do have a need to hire somebody. we do have a need to hire somebody. So, um, I have not heard from everyone. Are you okay, um, allowing Art to hire somebody for the job description he's provided?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with an assistant.
Okay.
I think that there are so many plates spinning here that it, because we don't have department heads, you know, that I'm, I understand that. I get it. Um, especially with the term. I, I thought when I read that description that it reads more like a, an assistant manager, not an assistant to the manager, because of its, the, the educational background as well as experience, like, and I, we briefly talked about this.
Yeah, if there was an assistant manager, you would definitely require, one example, you'd definitely require a, a master's degree in public administration. This one was not necessary, but it was preferred.
Yes.
There's slight differences. I mean, there's always a nuance between assistant to, assistant and manager.
Sure.
And I would, yeah, and I think what we really need is somebody that can work on projects, and you could technically call them a project manager.
Yeah.
Would be probably the most accurate, but it wouldn't attract the, the personnel that you want to, to apply.
I see. Because the way it reads, that person would be overqualified to be a project manager. I, I thought...
Not in city management. I think we're pretty good.
Okay, well, you would...
Because I, I, I actually stole it from another city, and combined some of their, their job descriptions to what, what we, what we needed, so.
I, I defer to your judgment on that. You're an insider.
Kat, Kat?
So I was going to ask if we would consider a management analyst, because Natalie was that until this recently, but then you addressed that question already, so that's fine. I'm fine with assistant to village manager.
Do we have enough, um, have we heard from everyone, or you?
I, I, I'm fine with the, I, I, to Bobby's point, the title, the title progression in this line of work is odd with the English language. Uh, you know, assistant to, and then, you know, assistant to an assistant, and then it will, that's odd. If this is the job description that you feel attracts that kind of person, I find it oddly fuzzy, but that's me, you know?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And if anybody has any, some, some, some changes to that job description, I know I've asked for them already, but if you've got something, you can send me, you know, definitely take a look at it and...
So my remarks, when I saw it from, but...
Go ahead.
No, when I saw it from Art, I said, you know, I know Dilbert's not politically correct anymore. That guy got himself in trouble, but that reads like a Dilbert, right? So, a little cartoon.
Oddly put on the ambiguous, yeah. You, you sort of like read our minds and, you know, you know, cure cancer, find silver bullets, and, and do stuff, save the world.
Yeah, go ahead.
A lot of do stuff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just, just a question, because we kinda harped on this the last time we worked between, uh, leaders. I understand the need. I, I get it. I, I understand the need. Is this something that a new person, this person would be inherited for the new manager? And is that...
Also, new manager wouldn't have a, or...
Yeah.
Maybe the role of somebody...
Yeah, what questions, whether or not to wait till the new manager comes on. Um, I don't know if that person needs to have more things on their plate.
Got it, okay.
You know, and this could be, you know, January, so you know, you gotta this period of time and...
Okay. That, you know, that's the way I looked at it previously.
So do you need a motion? Don't we need?
Uh, let's, uh, you know, we can do it one of two ways. We can either just have the motion, give Art the ability to hire. If you wanna have a final say-so, you can defer the, uh, defer the decision as a ratification, but still give Art the, the green light to go. So, kinda six of one, half dozen of the other. I think it's a little cleaner if you, if you said you can go ahead and, and, uh, proceed with the hire.
Do we need a formal motion, or just, uh...
Uh, it's not up for, it's not up for that today, but if, if he knows to go forward...
Okay, so yes, yes.
You, you need to include somebody else's eyes with it.
Oh, you know what? I, I take that back. It is for consideration. I thought, I had misread the, yeah.
Yeah, discussion and consideration.
So you can have a motion. My apologies.
So move.
Okay, so by trustee O'Connor, second by?
So move the other guy on the rise.
No, we can make that part of the motion. So move, can we amend the motion that, um, it must be, uh, two, at least two board members must be part of the interview process?
Yeah.
Including...
That's fine.
So is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so are you okay with that motion?
So move. So, so move.
As, as amended? Yes, okay.
And as a motion.
Seconded by trustee O'Reilly, roll call.
Trustee O'Connor, trustee O'Reilly, trustee Borowski, trustee Chris Meyer.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Okay, motion carried. Now, do we need to go on executive session, Vic, or can we kick the can?
I have nothing to...
Okay.
I've got one more section.
Okay, well, oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, you do, sorry.
Um, so what happens in, in the interim between, between now and hiring that manager? Uh, excuse me, the assistant to the manager. Um, and there's been a little discussion on staff as to whether this is the best thing to do or not.
Can I jump?
Do we, do I hire, use a temporary, temporary agency to hire someone, uh, in between this time? Because with, with that, with that position vacant, that's forty hours, that's gone. Do we need somebody to fill that? Um, staff kind of would like to prefer wait and see, see what's needed. Uh, they don't wanna spend their time teaching, uh, another sta, a new person how to do the job that's gonna be here for maybe two to three months until the assistant to comes on board. So we have this...
Yeah.
Um, well, yeah. Um, and, um, they think they can do enough of the jobs on their own, um, without this. My perspective is that I'd rather have extra coverage, since it's not gonna cost us more than what we're already spending, than not have enough. I don't wanna find out a month from now that we are really in, that we're, we're, we're short-staffed. Um, somebody went on vacation, somebody got sick, um, somebody's stressed out. Um, we have, all of our staff, two of the three are new. Um, I just am not sure that we can go without hiring a temp. And the temp here is outlined in my, uh, village manager's report. We do have, as far as tr, extra training required, both of these, we have two people from Gov. HR recommended that have worked in municipalities before. So I think the training won't be extensive. They will just have to familiarize themselves with how things are done in law and growth. But I believe that they will be quick studies, and they will help us, and they actually, this person may even be able to do, start one or two of the projects that we've been trying to get off our plate. Um, with that said, I just cur, uh, excuse me, wanna find out if the board is okay with me also hiring on my own, uh, without board involvement, a temporary, uh, hire for about twenty hours a week.
Temporary, like a temporary agency?
Yeah, yeah, HR job or something, right?
Gov. HR, 'cause I wanted to get somebody that had municipal experience. I looked at two, two agencies. Gov. HR, which provides municipal employees, um, and also a private, uh, company that does, uh, financial, uh, mostly financial help, but they could also provide this. Um, it's more expensive to go to a private agency. It's, it's less expensive and more in line with what our employees are currently making to use Gov. HR. And plus, I'm getting people that have worked in municipalities before, which I think is a big plus.
And are they a full-time, part-time? I'm just...
Part-time, twenty hours a week.
I see, okay.
Twenty plus or minus, yeah.
Probably, yes, huh? I, I'm in, I, I, I would be, if that's your assessment, yeah, we're oversight at this point. I do see holidays coming up, so I think the logic holds for me.
Yeah. How about this? Any objections if, uh, we let Art do that? Anyone object?
What's the expected labor rate?
They can actually...
I'm happy to raise the...
Twenty-six dollars an hour? What did you have?
Oh, twenty, that, that person would make, um, it's, it's total of, uh, with Gov. HR, it's thirty-five an hour, uh, twenty-five for the temp and ten for the agency.
Oh, got it, okay, got it.
So that covers their workers' comp and all their, you know, all their...
It's gonna cost us thirty-five an hour.
Seven hundred a week.
It's gonna cost us thirty-five an hour. And Natalie was making, you know, that was sixty-five plus, or, this is a temp, but Natalie was making during that time, she was making, you know, more than that per hour plus benefits. So, um, it, it's gonna cost the, that village less anyway.
Twenty-eight hundred hours a month, yeah.
Yeah, seven hun, seven hundred a week, probably, you know, seven thousand dollars for the next ten weeks.
Yeah. And she'd also, I would, I would, Katie can work a couple extra hours a week, too. A couple of extra hours a day, too. So, um, that's why between Katie working about seven and a half to ten hours more a week, and a temp doing twenty hours a week, we have thirty hours, twenty-seven and a half to thirty hours a week, covering the forty hours that Natalie had, knowing that Natalie would be much more productive and knows that da-da-da. So this person's gonna give us maybe twenty-five hours a week, and then we, we'll, we will forego some projects and, you know, just see how well this person, um, can do. And I'm gonna have the staff participate in a, if you approve it, I'm gonna have the staff participate in a, um, uh, Microsoft Teams interview with both candidates, so that we find somebody that's not only qualified, but is a good fit for who we have here in the office now.
And what are the, what do you want them to do? To fill in where Natalie's...
Yeah, there's a, a series of projects we have, and part of it's requiring flexibility, because, um, there are a variety of things that need to be done at different times, and it kinda moves. Um, the staff we have now, we're hired for one thing and are doing other things. So I think we can expect that same thing.
What's an example?
Um, Dana can probably be better at this than me. Um, Katie was hired to be a communications person, and this might not be a hundred percent accurate. Dana, correct me if I'm wrong. Katie was hired to be a communications, um, uh, person, and with Natalie here, she didn't do as much of that. Uh, Natalie took the lead on that. But now that Natalie is gone, then, um, Katie will become the, the bulletin, the, um...
And what had she been doing? What had Katie been doing?
Katie does a lot of backup. It helps for Margarita, since this is a busy time, um, for permanents, during this time of year. She's there to help, uh, she can schedule inspections, put in the inspection reports, um, answer questions, and help people as far as permitting. So that's been a big part of it, other than the communication. Uh, when she was, uh, first hired, I think it was before the decision was made, um, to go with the media contractor for, um, communications. So as, within that process, it started shifting to more of a liaison on that, and then a backup to, um, Margarita and to, um, the rest staff. Pretty much, uh, both Kanga and Katie are very cross-trained, so they're helping, uh, cover Margarita, and she's got stuff. They're helping with anything that Art or I ask them to pick up on. Um, so they're extremely versatile, even though, as I said, um, there were more specific things they were hired to.
That, that, yeah, I was just trying to get a sense of, for example, the pro, like, what kind of project would you ask somebody making with, at twenty-five dollars an hour, a temp or a person to do? That, not holding you accountable, but just trying to get a sense of what that is.
This person might, um, go ahead.
There are some, uh, things that can be done that don't necessarily need the, uh, a strong, you know, institutional, um, memory, um, for the village, such as making sure that our ordinances and resolutions are up to date, filed everywhere, um, easy, you know, to sign.
Sign.
So there are, yeah, there's a few different things like that, that, like I said, don't require that institutional background, but a temp could help out with...
They might even be able to do, but that project, Dana, which was, had been in the same direction, was, uh, some records management, who we have some difficulty with some finding and locating and organizing records. That person might be really good at that. We're gonna look at, whoever we hire and see what their strengths are, and look at what we need, and maybe they can start doing some of those projects.
And, and let me just ask one other question. So let's say you hire somebody, it doesn't work out. The way this works is you can let them go right away, too, right?
Yeah, yeah, and, and Gov. HR would, would replace and we'd find somebody else.
So this person would have technical skill?
Oh, yeah.
Technology.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, um, could they answer the phone if need be? Could they...
Yes, all that. They'll, they'll be filling in if they need to with staff.
Did you say that staff was gonna be interviewing this new person?
I'm gonna have them sit in on that, on that, on that Microsoft, I mean, well, there's all a series of questions I wanna have, and I'm gonna get questions from them, too, and